All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Isanti City Council the order if we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. During roll call, we have everyone present except for Councilman Dan Collison will be absent this evening. Do we have any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to adopting the agenda. Any modifications?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do have a revised agenda that has been posted online. This was due to a change on consent item L seven, which is for the resolution to for municipal state aid funds advancement. We did have a correction in numbers, so those corrections have been made in the packet. And if you have any questions when we get to the consent agenda, please let me know.
Motion to approve with the changes.
Second.
I have a motion to approve with the changes from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Look for a motion to approve the city council minutes. We have the August fifteenth city council budget work session, the August fifteenth committee of the whole meeting, the August fifteenth city council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve those minutes from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. For announcements, we've got our budget work session on Tuesday, September nineteenth at five P M. We've got the planning commission meeting on Tuesday, September nineteenth at six P M. City council on the nineteenth at seven P M. And committee of the whole on the nineteenth immediately following the city council meeting. Do we have any council committee reports? All right, moving on to business item K one, request from Carol Holdings, Inc. for a planned unit development approval of Carol Estates LLC creating two twenty-eight unit apartments. P I D is one six dot three zero dot two four zero zero and one six dot zero three zero dot two three zero zero.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we have the request for a P U D approval as well as a comprehensive plan amendment for the P I Ds that the mayor just stated for whiskey apartments. It's also for the final plat. This was reviewed by the planning commission at the August fifteenth meeting, which was recommended for approval with a five to one vote with the following conditions. All fees will be charged to the developer based on the city fee schedule. The developer shall be responsible for any and all permits and approvals that may be necessary from other applicable government agencies and submitted to the city of Isanti and or other governmental jurisdictions that may require said permits prior to development. Any and all costs associated with the recording and processing of any agreements implied shall be assumed by the developer. Trees and landscaping shall be planted according to the submitted landscape plan as guided by section fifteen of the city zoning ordinance. Buffering of trees in a six-foot tall fence shall be installed as guided by the city zoning ordinance. Dedication, if required, of utility and access easements are granted to the city of Isanti. And the developer at their cost must supply for right-of-way permits required for work within any city right-of-way, including sidewalks and trails, and to address any items, conditions identified in the memo from city engineer Jason Cook dated August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. The applicants are here. If you have any further questions, but staff does recommend approval.
All right, any questions for the applicants or any concerns, questions from council at all on anything?
So I do have a question. I'm looking at these drafting reports, our engineering reports, and I don't see an actual amount of feet between the garages and the sidewalk. I see sixty feet from the center of the road, but that doesn't really tell us how much room there is. Is there a exact number that we actually have? Because it seems like some of the numbers are different.
Could you state your name?
Tristan with Bogart Peterson. So we pushed the the building five feet back, so we have that five-foot drainage and utility easement there. On the northeast corner of the site, our garage is five feet, and then the narrowest spot on that corner has six point two feet between the property line and the sidewalk that is out there. So that'd be used for snow storage. As you go to the west, it gets larger, so it kind of angles as you go. So there's, that's the minimum amount of snow storage that would be, you know, available as you, as the city's plowing that or the county's plowing that sidewalk.
Okay, so on that, did that mean that the whole project was pushed back in the lot south? Or does, or is it just condensed in the parking? Or how was that?
It was, the whole, the whole thing was pushed back.
Okay.
And our, our buildings are now thirty feet from the south property.
Okay.
So they were just over that before we had to, you know, maneuver some stuff so that we wouldn't just take and go a full five feet back. We tried to maximize the area, keep as much distance between those south neighbors as possible. And thirty feet is the number that kind of the magic number that worked, so.
Okay, did you, I know in the last meeting, there was a lot of concern about people on the second floor being able to see in to neighboring houses. Did you do any sort of engineering estimate on how high the fence would have to be behind the property to?
Yes, I, I put an exhibit together. I don't have it. I think I sent it in. And basically, second floor, if you're standing on the second floor, you're six feet high, you know, so that's generous for a lot.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a seven-foot fence, and I'm assuming the elevation of the window, you know, looking for those houses that are next to it. So, you know, six feet up there, six feet up here would take a seven-foot fence. You guys allow a six-foot fence, so I think that'd be plenty, you know, what the, what your code has is an adequate number to block that. I guess, as I, I went through and was looking at the surrounding neighborhood, and that also, like, the houses back up to each other, like a typical residential development. You know, houses, you know, on the sides of those twin homes, they look right into each other, you know, into each other's windows. And then behind them, you also have neighbors doing that, so I think us putting up this fence is probably a better condition than what they currently have, you know, with the residential to residential situations. So if we have that six-foot fence, we pretty much eliminate that concern.
Okay. Would it be possible at all to have them do an eight-foot fence? Or is that asking too much? If he thinks that seven-foot would be total blockage, would eight-foot, I mean, would that be allowable?
We do require a conditional use permit to put up a fence that high, so it is actually more. We'll have to do another public hearing for that, and I do think that the six-foot fence is the reasonable height.
Okay.
You know. But they can also do, they could berm it and then put, still put the six-foot fence, then we avoid that.
Right.
Sure. It, it was a conservative.
Yep.
You know, figure that I kind of put together based on the profile, the height of the building, stuff like that.
Okay.
I think, you know, just knowing that, okay, seven feet definitely takes care of it. Six feet, I think, for your average, you know, your average renter who's not six feet tall. That's going to take care of it.
Solid fence.
Yeah, yes, vinyl?
Yeah, a screen fence.
Okay. Thanks for looking into all that stuff.
That was the only concern I had was, because we had brought that up to address that, you know. Got to appease everybody and everybody how we can, so that was my only concern that I have with this project is that fencing, so.
I would personally rather see him do a conditional use permit for eight-foot fence just to make sure, but that's my only.
You could still, they can berm it.
Right.
Berm it up two feet and put a six-foot fence on it, and they don't need a conditional use permit.
Could we ask them to do that then in the, okay?
If, if, if it isn't going to affect water flow at all, that'd be great if you could, could do that.
Okay, or maybe some decoration on the top, you know, six-foot fence with, you know, some decorations, something like that.
Sure.
It will also have the trees buffering along it also, which will grow up above it as time goes on. So it's not just the fence, it is with the trees as well.
Because I know your, your cost to go from a six-foot fence to an eight-foot fence jumps pretty good, so if you can do some decoration.
Sure.
Maybe on certain sections of it, with that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I appreciate that you're looking into the concerns. Matt, do you have, would you see any concerns with a six and a, what'd you say, six feet, two inch minimum between the sidewalk and the building for snow accumulation?
I wouldn't have any concern with that. Honestly, they would be maintaining that strip of land right there between the sidewalk and, and the back building, so no, I don't have any for.
Okay.
County does its storm over there and all that type of stuff, so.
We're only talking about a two-story building. I mean, it's not like we're going way up.
Right.
At my house, I lived it on, on Marion there, it was, you know, there was nobody behind me, and then they built, and it was, you know, people looking right down on top of me, and that was just part of the deal. You just kind of know that at some point, the area around you is going to develop, and you deal with it when it comes, so. And they have been, you guys have been great to work with, I think, along the, the way, and, and very accommodating. We, we certainly appreciate that, so.
Yes, thanks.
Any other concerns or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Heeman and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Can I?
Oops, sorry.
Can I just have a clarification on what that condition with the fence would be? So just with decor, decoration or? It just wasn't clear to me, so I want to make sure if it's.
I don't know that we're giving a specific direction. I think we trust that.
They work within reason to do.
Okay, just making sure. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, they could also go up higher, just longer poles and leave a foot below, you're, you know.
Yep.
There's, there's ways around it. You can still give that six-foot if they can get that up to that seven-foot mark. And if they had to do something on their bottom for that foot, I mean, I'm fine with that, too.
Yep.
Okay. Let's see, I don't know if we took a vote, I guess, there, so I had a, a, a motion from Councilman Heeman, a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Big. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. And I did have a, I wanted to kind of make sure I mentioned this too, but I did have quite a few. People, I guess, have been wondering if they were section eight housing or low income, and, and they were wondering about those apartments being like that across sixty-five behind Falcon Bank there, too. And I wanted to just make it clear that none of this is section eight housing or low-income housing or anything like that, so. But I know there was a lot of residents that were questioning that, so.
I also would like to clarify that that motion was for both resolutions A and B, or or the comprehensive plan amendment for the B three to R four residential zone as well as the planned unit development and the final plat?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to K two, resolution to consider accepting plans and specification and authorizing advertisement for bid for the Bluebird Park Splash Pad and Pad Improvements Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So this is, I guess, one piece of the Bluebird Park Splash Pad grant that the city obtained. These plans are strictly for the underground utilities to get the water to the restrooms and to the splash pad and the wastewater from the restrooms to the city's connection. And then the storm water from the splash pad into some perforated storm pipe to infiltrate it before it connects into the storm system. So basically, these plans are just that water line, the sanitary line, and the storm line. The, the splash pad itself would be a separate contract. The, the restrooms themselves are the separate contract that's being managed by the city already. And, and the power supply would be, you know, also just part of that building side of things, so. So what we have here is to get those public, you know, utility infrastructure pieces completed. So at this point, we're just wanting to take it out for bids. If we get authorized here tonight, we would recommend opening bids September twenty-seventh, at which point we would try and be able to turn it around and get it on that first October council meeting, where they would at least have the ability to try and do some of this work this fall if it fits their schedule. We, it's written in that it's basically their choice. If they begin, they'd have to have it at least restored to, you know, leveled ground before winter. Otherwise, they essentially have to have their work done by June of next year.
Is there any pumps involved to get the water from the splash pad to the drainage system, to the drain system?
No, no, the.
It's all, all flow?
Yep, so, so the, the site for water is already just a four-inch water main from the nearest main to the restrooms. And then we take a three-inch water main from the restrooms over to the splash pad. And just the city water pressure, you know, with the water tower being right there, if you can picture how much pressure we'd have. There's plenty of pressure for all that, and then the drain system is just, you know, standard drains right out the bottom. And then it's all downhill into that low depression area. That's where our storm pipe would go, and so all that would work just fine. We're planning to infiltrate the, the storm water to just not have extra loading on our storm system. But the only pumps that are going to be involved is the wastewater from the, the restrooms. That's always been in, in the game plan to have a grinder pump type structure right next to the restrooms because they're lower than the nearest sanitary.
Sure. I was just wondering if there, I, there's a lot of area there that could use that free water. That's going to be forty thousand gallons a day, and I was wondering if we could utilize it for the ball field or, or any other area. That, that's why I asked.
Yeah, that had been brought up before. We looked into that, and it was hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to have the water either treated to be able to be sprayed after it's been sprayed onto the kids. So Department of Health things, if you're spraying water where people are going to be, you got to
Sure.
not have a bacteria problem essentially, plus then just the sprinkler systems that don't exist out there. But, so yeah, that wasn't added to the plan since, you know, we're already kind of maxing out the, the grant budget here, so.
Okay.
All right, so this is just, just saying we're going to go out for bids for the utilities, essentially, so. And where, where are we at on getting drawings back? I don't know, we, we haven't seen anything on. Oh, you got them. What, did you just get those today or what? Okay, all right. So we got them back, it looks like. Okay. All right, well, yeah, I was just thinking about that as we were, as we were doing this, so.
We have, we do have the ba, mayor, we do have the plans back, and we're doing our final review on that to make sure there weren't any other, any changes.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Any discussion or questions at all on, on this resolution?
Motion to approve.
I just wanted to say that I'm going to nay this one just because I don't think more than a majority of our city residents think this is worth the money. That's all I got to say.
And I'll, I'll say it again. I mean, I was one that, I think you are a hundred percent right on the original way that we were going to fund it. I think you, people were opposed to it, or at least a lot of them were, and, but now with the way that we've changed the funding to where we're using the, the grant from the D N R, and we're using the part dedication funds, I mean, that's, seems to make a lot of sense. I mean, we have to use those funds for new park amenities, and I, I think that makes sense to use it. I was never a fan of taking money out of the general fund to build it, and we're not doing that anymore, so. I think that, that changes my opinion, but otherwise, I, I think that the way that we were doing it before, I would have agreed with you, but. Any other comments? I've got a motion from Councilman Lundin. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from George, excuse me, Councilman Heeman. All oppo, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries three to one. Moving on to K three, the resolution to consider approving the cannabinoid registration for Isanti liquor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we do have that the Isanti liquor store is looking to sell cannabinoid products. This is the city's step in allowing such action, and this would be for the registration, and they have paid the fee to allow the Isanti liquor store to sell those products.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to K four, ordinance to consider amending chapter one forty-four drug paraphernalia.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we did have a discussion at the August second city council meeting for staff to also make some revisions to this ordinance to remove any language that exclusively referenced marijuana. And so as you can see within your, your packet there, we do have some changes here. So recommended under definitions to add in the definition of controlled substance and reference state statute. And then throughout the ordinance chapter, we have removed anything that is specifically for marijuana use or products that would be used in conjunction with that. This has been posted for the required ten days, and staff is recommending approval based upon the direction from our last council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Travis, I have a quick question for you. Does removing section J of section I limit the police in any way? It's uh, like, basically all the paraphernalia, because some of that stuff could be used for other drugs?
I think there's enough covered in the rest of it to cover.
Okay. And then I have another one on here. Do we have to strike, what is it, C, where is that? Section one forty-four dash three, C, the prohibited advertising? Would that open us up to potentially people advertising for other types of drugs? I guess I would rather see that just stay, potentially, but I don't know if that's how that would work.
One forty-four, three, A?
No, C.
C, okay.
I mean, if you leave it in there, it's just referencing drug paraphernalia, and we've kind of sort of made it clear that marijuana doesn't include drug paraphernalia anyway, so yeah, why wouldn't you be able to just leave it then, I guess, right?
Like, just leave it in there?
Yeah, right.
Without striking it?
Yeah.
I just don't want us to be opened up to potentially someone coming advertising some other illicit business.
The process, Mayor and Council, is if we do want to keep that, we would then post this again. I'd make that change, post this for the required ten days, and then bring this back to the next city council meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry if I missed that, or if we missed it in previous meetings. I guess I never saw that the whole section was struck.
Give me an example.
Okay, so say if there's somebody that wants to come in, and now it's not illegal to sell, to even possess paraphernalia of any kind in the state of Minnesota according to the new state statute. What if someone were to come in and start selling stuff for heroin, or say, like, coca leaves, which are a derivative, or which is what they make cocaine out of, or? I mean, you could have people that advertise stuff that we don't want them to advertise, or a business that's, I don't know.
So what you're saying is we should have had in there prohibited advertising, and then the schedule of drugs that are illegal. And we didn't clarify it, so you're worried about?
Or just leave it as it was without striking it, but I don't know, I just thought it might open us up to some sort of issue if we say that, well, you can advertise for paraphernalia of, you know, say if there was a business that wanted to sell crack pipes. I mean, they could, could they go in and just advertise that now?
You know, there's state, are there state rules that already say that you can't do that, though?
I'm trying to look that up. I think there already is.
I would think so, yeah.
That there is.
But the state now made it so it's not illegal to have those things.
True.
So it's kind of a.
But it wasn't illegal to have glass pipes before, because until there was an illegal substance in it, they couldn't enforce it.
Now, now they can't either, and now, so now even with residue.
But they're still, you're still limited to that illegal substance. So if you have a crack pipe, you're smoking marijuana in it, it's going to be okay. But if you're smoking crack and there's the residue of crack in it, it's illegal.
That's not how it is now. They changed that, so it is technically still legal. You can still, now you can have a crack pipe with crack residue, and you can't get arrested for it. That's new states.
I, I understood it.
They changed that this year with this ordinance. It was hidden into all this stuff, and it was, I think it was a huge miss on the state government. So I think we need to do what we have to do to protect our city from those types of things.
I agree with you, Luke, but I don't think we're going to have a problem with somebody advertising something that's illegal because it's probably illegal to do. We have to address in the future.
I wouldn't think they'd want to advertise something that's going to be illegal to draw attention to you.
Right.
I mean, that's, that, we're splitting hairs at this moment.
I think so.
I, that's, that's my opinion. I mean, Travis is going to do everything the law is going to allow him to do, so, I mean.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is that with?
As is.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Heeman, and I have a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries three, one.
I don't disagree with the, but it's, the whole thing is, now all of a sudden, they can't advertise what business that they're going to have. Now you're tying their hands on another. I don't disagree.
Right.
I, I, be honest with you, I don't think you should legalize it to start with, but there ain't nothing you or I or any of us can do with that. You know, and it's, your law and business, you know, it, it's really a gray area.
It is. Yeah, I just don't want to tie hands, but I, I get it either way.
All right, moving on to K five, ordinance to consider amending chapter two-two-seven, parking and storage.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this was discussed at our last committee of the whole meeting. This is to allow parking and storage of vehicles and also non-motorized units in different areas. I have, I believe, made the changes as was discussed at that committee meeting, and I updated the, the image. So what I did is, in the front of the house, next to the driveway, included language to say that they, that vehicles and trailers need to be on paved driveway or on an improved surface extension within ten feet of the paved driveway. I also stated that it could be ten feet on either side of the driveway in the front yard, however, they have to pick one side or the other. I made kind of a lighter gray to show that that would be improved, like a class five gravel or something of that nature. Then also that was discussed was to allow for parking on grass on that house image to the, on the left side that allowed, looks like those hash square boxes on the side of a detached garage or driveway as goes to the backyard, because that was discussed to not only have it on the side of the house if you have a driveway that extends to the back. Otherwise, grass parking would be allowed, a front yard, side yard, not within the, any utility easement areas. Also within distance from the setbacks from the property line. And non-motorized units could be parked on the grass in the rear yard.
So I had a question here on two-two-seven dash eight, B nine. We struck only one trailer, our RV shall be permitted at any time on the driveway. Is there, so are we still only limited to, what is it, five total units with one trailer being one of those? Or why was that section struck out, that part? Just because it says driveway?
Because it's more, because more than one. Only one trailer wreckage. Well, because you could park it on the side, it doesn't have to be on the driveway anymore.
Okay, just the driveway.
Yeah, it's the driveway part of it.
Okay.
Because now it could be parked on the side, it could be parked on the side of the driveway, the side of the house.
Okay, that's what I thought, just wanted to make sure. And then I saw somewhere in this that there was, said one unit. Now, is a truck and a trailer that are attached together, is that considered a unit? So if you have a truck hooked to a, a boat trailer, is that considered one unit? Or would, say, like, we have someone that has a truck and a boat, and they back up the truck and boat next to their house, and they leave them parked together. Is that technically two units, so it would still wouldn't fit this ordinance, or is that one unit if they're connected?
It'd be two units. It'd be two units.
Okay, so...
My interpretation.
Mine also, but if you have two snowmobiles, for instance, on the trailer, that's one unit, but two snowmobiles off the trailer, and then a trailer, that's three units.
Okay.
But the vehicle with the trailer, they're separate units.
Okay, so with the example of the people that came in with the pickup truck hauling there, I think it was a pontoon off of Main, so would they be in compliance with this as they park it? Because if it's, if, if you can only have one unit next to your garage or next to your driveway, uh, maybe I'm just misunderstanding where it says one unit.
If they would be allowed to park it on the side or in the driveway itself? On the side of the driveway?
Yeah. I'll try and find that section again.
I mean, they would be fine where they're at, because they have, I mean, for one thing, we're allowing parking along the side of the garage, but you're just wondering, I mean, is that gonna... Because, I mean, I think the, the limit is four vehicles, right, per?
Five.
And that's, is it five?
Five.
Okay.
Units or vehicles, they're not differentiated, so if you had two cars.
And that doesn't count if you have something in the garage. I mean, you're not, you're only counting outdoor parking and...
Right. So the pontoon would be one, vehicle would be one, but he could put the pontoon on the side.
So yeah, I mean, it solves the problem that we were looking at with that particular situation, for sure. And he's got class five, actually, along the side of the garage there, I saw too, so...
So is that one unit was just in the grass, then? I gotta find it.
I think that was the issue, that was that it was parked in, in the grass, but really underneath the grass, it looked like it was class five and...
Yeah, I don't think actually it states how many can be on the grass versus a driveway.
Okay.
It's just total, total units. On that section nine, the maximum number of trailers and or recreational vehicle units permitted on a property is two, with the exception of the R one A. So you'd be, you would have a limit on, if you had a boat, a trailer, and let's say another, a duck boat, yeah, it's two units. That was old language. I didn't change that, but if you wanted to allow more units, or any units could add up to five, we would need to change that language.
What do you guys think?
To approve.
Okay. I have a motion to approve from Councilman Heeman and...
Second.
Second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries three to one. Yeah, I think that's gonna go a long ways. I mean, our goal with all of this stuff is just to match what people are actually doing in real life, and I think that's gonna, gonna solve a lot of issues there, so...
And Blaine does the same thing, and they, they, their city looks good, so...
Yeah, yeah. Case six, the ordinance to consider amending chapter two ninety-five, tobacco, cannabis, hemp, and related delivery products.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So we have amended chapter two ninety-five to include cannabis and hemp into that section with, or into that chapter along with tobacco. So we did add a definition, cannabis flower, cannabis products, and lower potency hemp edibles, as well as public place. What this, and public property, and what this does is adds an additional section, two ninety-five dash four, which does not allow for people to smoke or use vaporized products or cannabis products, artificial derived cannabinoids, or lower potency hemp products in a public facility or on pro, public property. As a side note, I would like to add that the city of Cambridge and Iceni County, I was informed today, did pass an ordinance to also have stipulations within public areas that are on private property. We did not do that, but I thought I would also let you know that that's what they did.
This was as we discussed in Cal.
This is exactly as was discussed, yes.
Motion to approve.
The only question I had is, do you think, do we need to carve out an exemption or an exemption for two ninety-five two and two ninety-five three that... Because, I mean, it says cigar, pipe, you know, other, I mean, it implies tobacco-related items there, I guess, but, I mean, is it confusing still, you think, or?
I think that marijuana is not tobacco, so that's why we added this in, and it was separate enough to identify them individually.
Okay, so clear enough, you think, for?
I guess Chief Myers agrees that it is.
Yeah, okay. All right, sounds good.
I'll second that motion.
So I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Uh, moving on to case seven, ordinance to consider amending chapter one eleven, building construction.
Mayor and Council, this is to amend, uh, chapter one eleven, building construction, to allow for a new article of Minnesota state plumbing code standards. This is by request from Rum River Consultants, who we're going with for interim building services. They highly recommended that we adopt this into our ordinance, so they are able to do our plan review. The state does take an incredibly long time. It can cause some massive delays for projects, waiting for them to do plumbing plan reviews. And thus, by statute, we're able to have them do it. People could cho, choose to go with the state if they want through DOLI, or they could go through who we have as our interim building services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Heeman and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to K...
Mayor and Council, I would like to just add a side note for building services. I do not have it on the agenda this evening to discuss permanent building services, as I'm still negotiating with them on, um, terms and agreement for pricing for that, so that I expect for that to come before council at the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Uh, moving on to K eight, brush chipping proposal discussion.
All right, Mayor and Council, so, um, starting on May second, we entered into discussions with staff about hauling away brush from the compo site, the cost of that, what, where we had been in the past, um, how much brush we haul out, and whether or not to allow residents to bring brush to our compo site. Shortly after that meeting, it was discussed that we would add, um, that as a service to our residents to allow them to bring three inch diameter or less. And then it just left us with a discussion of where do we want to bring that brush to? Um, and if we wanted to put together a document to see if we could get a company to come in and haul that away and, and in lieu of hopefully having a high price tag tied to that, give some advertising with that. All the information for the costs are within your packet. Uh, we did receive one, um, proposal with our RFP. This was for Tibet, I'll say correctly, Tibet's Tree Service. The cost is quite high. Uh, it was fifteen thousand dollars for the first year. It was even higher for the second year. We only did two years, just so we could get a feel for this. We did also, um, allow for them to advertise that whole time. But there really was a risk for them in not knowing how much brush we're gonna have, so we're asking them to give a number out there, which we don't have anything to tie it to. So it is open for discussion of what we want to do further. I think staff's recommendation is to continue what we're doing and hauling it out to Revard, or possibly doing something for a bonfire event. But the fifteen thousand didn't warrant what the, what the city was maybe looking for.
Yeah, I think we probably look back at what our previous discussion was on, you know, are we better off renting a wood chipper? Are we better off hauling it to Revard? And I think we have been hauling it to Revard, right, is at a hundred dollars a load for a dump truck load? Okay, I think that's gonna be probably, probably the best way to go. I mean, if that's what we're doing now, or what do you think about renting a wood chipper, or?
Right now, I figure we probably have twenty to twenty-five dump truck loads out there. It continues to come in. I don't, I think it'll probably come in faster towards the end of the compo season, as people are doing yard cleanup and stuff like that. I think we'll get, end up getting a lot more brush in. We can do it. A lot of it is just at this point, finding the staff time to haul it down to Revard. When we do it, we basically designate one guy. That's what you're doing all day long. You're loading the truck, bringing it down, or come back and another load. It's just be time consuming. Probably can get five loads a day, maybe, you know, it's just finding the time to do it.
Sure, easier than doing a wood chipper, though, and nicer, I suppose, to be able to do it, kind of, if you're renting it by the week, you don't want to have to be forced to...
I think it was eight grand at Crawford's for a week.
What'd you say?
The wood chipper, wasn't it like eight?
Uh, well, I think we could rent one ourselves for eight, eight, eight eighty, right, yeah, and then we could do, chip it ourselves, but then I suppose we still gotta get rid of it, so... For a week, yeah, but then you'd have the guys doing it, too, and I don't know, it's, you know, what would you think would be easier? Probably just taking it down, making the loads at the dump truck and...
I, I would prefer taking a load in the dump truck, yeah.
Yeah.
Get rid of it that way.
Yeah, I can't imagine it would be a real quick process to, to chip that much wood and messing around with that, so... I don't, that would, my, my suggestion would be we'd just go with kind of what we've been doing, and, you know, if it becomes an issue, we look at it down the road, but I think that's been working for us, so...
Yeah, maybe we'll have a better idea by next year how much amount we're gonna get. And I think they were kind of unsure as well, so they're really risk averse on that estimate or price. I think it's a good time filler, too, for you guys. It's a good service, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's getting used. I mean, the residents would, obviously, it's, it's something that they've, you know, had a need for, for sure, so...
I would just like to add, too, we didn't do, Public Works didn't do any chipping last year, or any, um, uh, tree trimming last year.
Yeah.
Illuminati Sandy, so we've got a long list of trees to, to trim, um, this, hopefully this fall, so...
Yeah, and that'll add some, I'm sure, too, so...
That's usually our winter fillers, trimming trees, so there's gonna be a lot more next year.
Sure. All right.
Mayor and Council, if we are not going to accept this, even though we don't have a resolution within the packet, I would request that there be a motion to reject the proposal.
Motion to reject. Second.
I have a motion to reject the proposal from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Uh, moving on to K nine, the county discussion.
I would, uh, I actually had someone from the public that was gonna come and speak during this. Can we table this until another meeting? Would that be okay?
Yes.
It'd be postponed.
Postponed, or...
Table means we gotta come back to it tonight.
Okay, sure.
Yes, it would be to postpone it, and, uh, so would you like to request it to the October third meeting? I believe you may not be here the next meeting.
Uh, yeah, yes.
Do we need a motion for that?
It, I'd prefer you did a motion, yes, thank you.
Motion to move it to October?
Third.
Third.
I just want to let you know, I will not be here for that meeting. Just so you know.
Or, I mean, would it be better if we did it at a Cal meeting?
We could do October Cal, uh, the seventeenth.
Yeah, let's just do the third of October if we can, if you guys are okay with that.
Yes. So my motion still stands.
I'll second. Sorry, I was really, I'm, I'm kind of surprised you didn't come in tonight, so...
Okay. I have a motion from, uh, Councilman Heeman to move this item to the October third meeting, and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to K ten, association development discussion. Looks like that was Councilman Merrill.
It was. So, uh, with the attendance, attendance of so many people at the last meeting that lived on that HOA behind the Whiskey Road Apartments, I wanted to kind of look into how we approach HOAs with plowing and with taxes. I don't know, do they get, do HOAs get any sort of tax break for taking care of their own plowing, or any of their, any of their stuff that HOAs do?
No, that's a separate agreement that the developer wanted it designed as a private road, so no, there'd be no tax break. I'll let Mike speak to a little bit more.
Yeah, it's, basically, it's treated as private property, and that's what they, that's what they wanted. Generally, um, generally, I don't recommend private roads. Basically, the problem gets to be is, if it's a private road, they don't have to build it to city standards. And what, well, not generally, what will happen eventually is that somebody who's not well-intentioned, or not the brightest bulb, will be in charge of the HOA. They are not gonna sock away the money they need for capital maintenance and replacement, and eventually they will ask us to bail them out.
Yep.
That's how it will end eventually.
So that's why I brought this up, was, is there any way that we can disallow that from ever happening again? I don't, it, it really bothered me that that elders in the neighborhood has to, it's a hardship for them to try and take care of the snow on their street. And also, when I rode along with Public Works this winter, uh, some of the HOA streets, I don't remember, there was one specifically that, um, the Public Works employees said that they got complaints about thinking that the city should plow it, even though they can't because it's HOA. So I would like to maybe look into not allowing HOAs to do their own plowing, because I think it's detriment, it's detrimental to people that need to go through this area to get somewhere if it's not plowed in time or, or up to code, or... And I just don't want any sort of developer to have the sort of power to put more people into the situation that that neighborhood is in right now. Um, and then also, I would like to look into helping them out with that, even though it's technically not built up to standards. I think that's kind of a, that was a, seems like that's kind of a miss.
When you talk about that, that street isn't wide enough. There's no place for the plow truck to turn around. You're gonna put undue time on staff to try to clean that driveway. So when you do that, now you're spending more in tax dollars for plowing snow. Now you're putting more tax base onto the rest of the residents. You have to understand, when they build a development with an HOA, you, any city you go into, when you look down their streets and you see a green street sign, that's city property. When you see a blue one, that's private HOA property. Just keep that in mind. There's a lot more than you think of that, and if that street isn't up to standards, next thing you know, we're gonna be rebuilding this street and talk at taxpayers' cost. That's the way that development was written. Those people agreed to that when they purchased in there. I, I don't want to see that put on the other taxpayers.
Sure.
Plain and simple. I don't want to put their, I don't want to put staff's time doubling the amount of time to plow a block-long street when they could be getting other streets that everybody else is paid for to do.
Okay.
I agree. I, I think it should stay the way it is for existing. Is, what would we have to do in the future to amend that this can never happen again, that the city would be responsible for all streets?
So I don't, I don't know that you can prevent a future council from saying that, yeah, we're gonna allow an HOA in a private street. But what I can tell you is, is that when an HOA fails to put, into, put aside money for capital maintenance and replacement on roads especially, the end result, and would be my recommendation, would be is that we will take it over, and we will assess one hundred percent of the project to the HOA. At the end, it's now city standard. I'm happy to take it, but the members of that HOA will need to pay the full cost of that project. That would be my recommendation.
I can't think of the name of it, but there's that development that, uh, Semler just built those last strip, you remember where I'm talking about? Where the fire department was supposed to have that through the street. Semler built that, those, all those single-family homes supposed to be, that's an HOA in there, and that whole HOA was screaming, "We want the city to take it over." The street wasn't wide enough to even park a car on it and drive through there. Now you want to have the city take over plowing that? That's just, that's, and they're like, "Well, we want them to." You're gonna have to bring the street up to standard. Who's gonna pay for it?
So there's no ordinance or, or policy we can put in place in the future to not allow this?
I mean, basically, anything a council can put in place, a future council can take back. Is how that works in the end.
On an individual project basis? Okay.
It does go through the individual project, um, and usually you're gonna see it come through on planning commission as a request. Um, the times that I've seen associations come through, or the developer who wants to put in associations, because usually they don't want to pay for all those standards, and it really is up to the council if they want to allow it, so they get development. There have been times I've been part of meetings, I've urged against what was allowed, but if council wants to go in that direction to get development, it is something that they've allowed, because they don't have to give a subsidy for that. They just have to, um, allow them to do private things, which then they have to own, um, as a way to get that development to go through.
So we...
It's a cost savings for the developer.
We can't write an ordinance to require private roads to be up to public road standards? That would eliminate all this issue. You know, if, if a public road has to be, say, thirty feet wide, or whatever it is, why can we not say that they have to meet public road standards for their private road? Then if, if anytime in the future we end up having to take it over, we can still at least manage, versus with a situation where he just talked about and what I talked about, now we, we, our hands are tied. So is there any way we can require... So is there any way we can require them to meet public road standards? I mean, that seems like a fairly.
I think you could on a project by project basis, but I think that council could change it for the next project of different council members.
You can just do a change, I guess, I don't know how that's written in, with HOAs in our code.
Well, hopefully future councils will, will realize the problems we've had in the past. In case it happens after none of us are up here anymore.
Yeah, the simplest thing on any development is to require the developer to put in roads and infrastructure that are up to city standards.
Yeah.
And then us simply take it at the end, and the developer understands then that they are not on the hook for future capital maintenance and replacement, and that's the arrangement, right? That it's a public road, anybody gets it, it's part of our infrastructure. Um, but once that road goes in private and it's not up to standard, there's really only one clear way out that doesn't leave every other taxpayer on the hook, and that is that HOA needs to pay for the project, get it up to city standards, and one hundred percent of the project is assessed.
I just don't wanna depend on someone else in the future to think about this because maybe someone, ten years from now, that people might not, that are on council, might all be fresh and not have any idea that there's HOA problems. So there's nothing that we can change in the way.
You, I mean, that would be the benefit, right? I mean, so anything a council could put in place, a future council can take back.
Right.
You could make that the exercise. You know, you could, you could put it in place and at least make them go through the formality of taking it out if they're gonna do it.
Yes.
And, and by that, you know, you can move information forward in time, say twenty years. I mean, there, I mean, I could see, I could see value in that.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I would like to do.
Wouldn't prevent them from undoing it, but at least they'd have to have read it.
Right. I wouldn't, I would like to look into something like that, change it.
Just, you know, that development wasn't under an HOA, never was. The builder, when he built that, wanted to put a cul-de-sac and there wasn't room to do it. And the only way he could get to build those properties on there and sell them was to make it a private road. So you, so that develop, the developer, and I know who he was, I'm not gonna say any names, but when he did that, he looked at dollar signs to sell these lots. And that was the only way he could do it because he couldn't get a city standard road and make everything work in there.
Right.
So when they bought those properties, they knew that from the day they bought them. You don't, HO, we really haven't had a lot of HOA, HOA properties in I C A N E in the last thirteen years that I've been on this council. I don't think there's been one. Okay? So you're asking for something to do that is out of our hands to do. I, I just said let them do it. The staff recommends to bring it up to city standards because they already know it, and that has been brought up many times to other things. If the developer doesn't wanna do it, he's not gonna, wants, not gonna do it. He wants to maximize, get everything he can out of those lots, just like Semler on the south end of town, where I live. He wanted to put in more houses, which was only plotted for thirty-five. He could do forty-five, but he couldn't do the fifty-five. So we pumped the brakes on the fifty-five and brought it back to forty-five because he wanted to shrink everything and make everything tight so he could get more houses in to make more money. You understand what I'm going at?
Oh, right.
The developer is the one that's gonna eat this. They draw them up that way? That, that's the way they draw it up.
Yeah, but then.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, but there's no way I can tell somebody, just like you all sit up here and say, it's your property, I want you to do what you want to with it. So now you're telling a developer that owns this property, this twenty acres, to build all these houses on there, but he doesn't wanna pay the extra money for the infrastructure to make the roads wider, so now you're telling him he has to? You're going, that's a double standard that you're setting up here.
But it protects the residents, which is more important to me than developers.
The resident that buys that property should know that upfront. And if they don't, then that developer and that real estate agent aren't doing their job. And it isn't my job, it isn't your job, to tell these people that. You know, I, just like when there's a foreclosed property, and I totally disagree with this, there's a foreclosed property and the people that bailed on it and left it, the next person that buys that property is on the hook for that sewer and water bill. He never even turned on the water faucet yet. And they're hooked, on the hook for that? I don't agree with that either. That should go to the real estate agent and the bank and the previous owners. It should not go on the new purchasers, plain and simple. So you're, you're, you, you're setting a double standard by wanting to tell somebody they can't do something with their property by telling them that they should bring this up to them. That's up to them. They get told that they should do this, and they don't wanna because they wanna maximize their costs and their profitability. That's why they do that.
Okay, but what about in neighborhoods where you have to drive through an HOA neighborhood to get to another neighborhood? Then you're having people that are paying taxpayer dollars.
Most HOA neighborhoods are off to the side.
Most, but not all.
No. All of them are. I don't know where you got an HOA property that the city doesn't, that stops the plow, goes two blocks and lifts them and drops the plow and goes through there. That hasn't happened. HOAs are off the main road. They're not, they're not built in the middle of something.
Is that, is that a requirement?
I was just gonna say, because I've never researched HOAs, to be honest, I think it'd be great if I could have time to research to see what our options are, just so we don't say the, the wrong thing or like, well, here's what we've always done, because maybe it's not right, I don't know. Um, so I'd have to look into it further of where we actually have it written within our zoning code of what's permitted. What are we legally required to accept it or not? Maybe there is something we could do. I'd like to look into it further.
Yeah, that's basically why I brought this up, is we need to, I wanna look at it because I think it, just seeing that many people show up to a meeting and we can't do anything about it is really disheartening as leaders, so.
And there's other things besides roads that present a challenge to the city. Um, for example, water's infrastructure in a HOA can be private, and that becomes troublesome because then you have water passing through, looping around, um, in a city infrastructure that's actually not city infrastructure. So there are some big challenges with it, so I'll look into it.
Do you know if we're legally required to allow HOAs?
I'm gonna look into that. I don't have that answer.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get us, get back to us with this meeting. Thanks.
Yep.
I don't have a problem getting more information, but I, I think I agree with Steve on this, that I think it's, it's, uh, and you could just take it, it's situation by situation, but I, I think to your point, I mean, that you, um, you don't wanna tell the property owner what they can and can't do right off the bat. You'd rather, you know, have the ability to, to say, I mean, 'cause you never know. I mean, if we'd have been sitting here in that situation at that time when they were looking to build that road and they wanted to do a private road, you may say, well, boy, we haven't had much construction lately. It's been tough times, you know, we, we really need some development going on. I mean, maybe, maybe we'll go ahead and make an exception, you know, to this rule because we wanna get them in there, you know, so. I think there's, there's certain times where it's definitely valuable to be able to be more flexible, so. Um, but if you guys wanna dig into it, that's fine with me, but.
I, I don't disagree with you at all, Luke, but I'm just stating the facts. That's just the way it is. I don't, there are some people that prefer being in HOA than having their own standalone home. You don't side your house, you don't roof your house, you don't replace your windows in your house, you don't pay for garbage. That's all built into your HOA.
Right.
But on the flip side, that HOA could be a hundred and sixty to two hundred and sixty dollars a month to cost you. Me, I wouldn't wanna live in an HOA. I'd rather pay my neighbor to come mow my grass than not, than have to have my, you know, and then there's stipulations in HOAs. When I lived over there, I couldn't park my company truck there. It's, it's a tough thing. I don't disagree with you, but you have to look at it, at their point. They wanna do it, that's the risk they take.
All right. Do you need a motion from us at all to get more information put together on that, or?
No, 'cause I'd like to know too.
Okay. All right, uh, any questions or anything on the consent agenda that we need to discuss?
Uh, I know I've said this a couple of times, but for L eight, I'm going to nay this consent agenda just because I don't think we should spend the money for the new police truck.
And this truck has actually been budgeted in this current budget, so we've already pulled the money aside for it. And it's, you actually ordered it in twenty twenty-two, it looks like. And you wanna speak to that at all, Travis, or?
We did order it last twenty twenty-two. In theory, that's replacing the investigator vehicle, which is a two thousand and twelve Chevy Impala. So that's, yeah, so we ordered it last August or something, and it finally arrived, because we knew that, we didn't even know if we could get one.
Can, can you refresh our memory on, on the warranty you get on these vehicles?
So, on the warranty, um, let me pull it up here. I had Lieutenant look into that, uh, no extended warranties are available. They, they won't extended warranty a police service vehicle just because of the, uh, issues with them. The, uh, Dodges that we've been getting have the, let me see, pull up his. Five-year, hundred-thousand-mile drivetrain warranty. Um, we just put new motor in one of our Drangos and a new head on the other one last week, so. That's in the Dodges.
Is, is any other manufacturer, so you get a civilian type warranty on it, basically?
Yes.
Same warranty I would get. Does, does Ford or any of the other major offer anything better, like six-year, seven-year?
Five-year, sixty thousand for Ford.
So that was, that was kind of, I wanted to stem this into something else too. Uh, Kia's have, I think it's a ten-year, hundred-thousand-mile warranty. Can you use a Kia as a, as a cop car? I, I don't necessarily wanna promote it, but it's ten years, hundred thousand miles, well.
Yeah, I mean, like, uh, there's PPV, police pursuit rated vehicles and ones that are not. All of ours are, except for like my vehicle is not.
Okay. So the Dodge is probably the best warranty for?
Well, it is currently, I mean, who knows what next year brings, but yeah, currently Dodge is, 'cause Dodge is the, which, like I said, just in the last two weeks, I think, we put a head on one of the Dodges and a new engine in the other one under that warranty. Again, you, it's hard to equate a police vehicle to a civilian vehicle because the amount of engines we've put through with these police vehicles is ridiculous.
Yep.
I've never put a new engine in my personal vehicle, so, I mean, it's different.
Yep.
But yeah, this vehicle is the investigator vehicle to replace that two thousand and twelve Impala.
And you, you won't actually use it as an investigator vehicle though, right? You'll just pass along the.
Correct, yeah. So that one, that one will get cycled out, and then we have the three administrative vehicles, yeah.
So the, I saw the purchase price was roughly thirty-nine thousand and the total outfitted price is sixty-nine thousand. Um, there's no way to move this, is that because it's, I mean, is, it's gonna replace a squad vehicle, right? Uh, a daily driven squad car?
No.
No?
It's replacing a two thousand and twelve Impala.
Okay, do you have to, I guess, why do you, why are you getting a truck to replace a car? I thought, I guess I'm a little confused. I thought it was gonna, why is it, why is the outfitting cost thirty thousand dollars to outfit a normal, non-PD or non?
Yeah, 'cause it's a little cheaper because we're not putting a cage in it and no graphics on the outside, so we're probably, I think, seven or eight thousand dollars cheaper than if we did a regular police vehicle package with that.
So what's included for that if it's just a, an investigator vehicle? I guess I, I don't, I don't know enough about.
It is outfitted like a, like a squad, so if it got into a pursuit or something like that, it does have the lights and.
It's everything except for the cage and the graphic package.
So you are gonna use it as an investigator vehicle though?
Yes.
Well, no, it's an administrative vehicle, so we have my vehicle, the F one fifty, and then it'll be this vehicle. So whether it's gonna be investigator vehicle or, depending on how mileage plays out with Lieutenant McCarty's truck and my swat goes back and forth.
Okay. Gotcha.
Same side of the vehicles, the administrative vehicles.
Okay.
I guess wouldn't it be cheaper to do a car?
Um, the other ones were, when we looked at Fords back then, they were forty-six thousand for the Explorers. They don't make sedans for police vehicles. It actually ironically is cheaper than a SUV. At least that bid was, that state bid from last year.
What's the minimum equipment you would need for an investigative vehicle?
Well, it needed to be emergency vehicles, so the lights.
Well, yeah, do you need the lights or printers, radar, software, or camera? I mean.
And you can't take that from another vehicle?
Uh, no, not taking it from another vehicle, but it, what's the use for, of an investigative vehicle? I should ask that. What, uh, the investigator going out knocking doors or doing investigative type work, right?
Correct.
Okay, so does it have to be completely outfitted and able in case there's a call comes in and he needs to go to it?
Yeah, that's a good example. Um, and you know, like the whole camera system, you have to have a camera system in because by policy they have to be wearing their body camera, and if their body camera can't sync to their squad camera, there's gonna be an issue with that. That's, and, uh, but it's, to be able to utilize that vehicle, if they're driving down the road and have to go, our investigators do assist or back up our patrol guys, and even Brian, now as investigator, does do some patrol work and traffic work while he's working, but he jumps into a squad at the time, so we give him the opportunity not to.
So this will be an all-purpose vehicle, basically?
Yes, and the way that, um, last week when we were short vehicles and we had to double up because we had them in the shop, we could in theory use that vehicle as a primary patrol vehicle at that time.
So you.
The Impala we couldn't use because it didn't have much of anything in it.
Okay, so you said that you can only use SUVs and trucks now for?
You can use whatever you want, as long as it's a police pursuit package vehicle, but when we did the state bid from last year, there was no sedans that were PPV rated vehicles. They got rid of them.
Really?
I haven't checked this year to see if anybody's, but I don't think anybody's offering a police sedan anymore.
So the Impalas, they're not interesting, okay. And there's nothing that you can save from the two thousand and twelve Impala to put into this truck to save some money? I don't, I mean, lights.
No, actually, the two thousand and twelve Impala is, no.
Okay.
There's not. There's a visor light, like it flipped down, so we, it, it, it didn't get used as much as it should have because it was never equipped. So a lot of times it never got used. I mean, it, we had him driving around in that. I didn't want him to turn his lights on because it wasn't safe with that amount, lack of amount of lights.
All right, one last question on this. So the sixty-seven thousand, is this part of the general budget or is this actually part of the police budget? So when we see police budget, is it actually in those numbers or is it coming out of the general fund numbers?
You, you see it in, uh, Fund nine twenty. Fund nine twenty is capital maintenance and replacement for general fund departments. And then the, the general ledger code is the exact same, except that it's, instead of starting with one oh one, it starts with nine twenty.
Okay, so when we're looking at the police budget, add that number on top of it. Basically, if, if I wanna depart, you know, look at each department and what, what we're using for funding for each department, I would add that number over.
There'd be one way to do it, yeah.
Is there a lot more items like that that go over towards police department that, that I might be unaware of?
Um, it's all listed out in, in budget documents that I put out.
I'm just wondering because it's our biggest budget, and, you know, I, I'd like to keep, uh, eye on what's going on and how much it really is instead of numbers being shuffled around.
No, we, we, we list, we list all those items. Everything is.
Does it have to be this way in the future? Can these requests be put on the police budget instead of having to be come out of nine twenty? Is there a way to keep it all together?
The problem gets to be is, is that to, to maintain, all right, so the, the point of having Fund nine twenty be separate and have capital be separate is, is that we want to minimize or substantially reduce fluctuations in the levy, right? We don't want the levy to have to jump drastically one year to cover expensive costs, not necessarily a squad car, but especially like a grader, a plow truck, where we're talking quarter million dollars. Um, you don't want that to have to be within the general fund budget and understand those fluctuations there. So we set those items aside in Fund nine twenty, still only general fund capital expenditures, but there we can just simply cash flow and understand that operating expenses and fund balance for the general fund is a separate item.
Okay.
So you, you would still identify, um, what, uh, so his department code for the general front, one oh one, forty-two, one ten, and then, you know, you'd have personnel to start with, uh, the final three digits, personnel's cost would be one hundred. Um, supplies would be two hundred, you know. The same is true in nine twenty, right? Except now everything starts with nine twenty, ends with five hundred. Five hundred is our, our capital, um, outlay item. And, but those, those department codes within, still forty-two, one hundred and ten, so.
Okay. I was just curious because the police department is something like fifty-two, fifty-four percent of our budget, so really in reality, if we add this on and other expenses we're unaware of, it could actually be up in the six, fifty-eight percent range?
Well, that's, that's the other, that's the other problem with looking at it that way is, is if, if we have one year where Streets is not buying a plow truck, not buying a grader, all those things, that budget looks low. But the next year, when you get, say, a plow truck and a grader, all of a sudden, that year, the budget for Streets looks really high. And so those year-to-year fluctuations start to, really start to skew how you might see the departments and how it really lays out in a genuine, consistent, year-to-year, apples-to-apples look. Right? Whereas if we have the, um, all the capital stuff set aside in the, um, in Fund nine twenty, um, if we wanna look, we can simply highlight those in Excel, and I can send that document to anybody that would like it. Um, you can highlight those cells and see the sum. What did we spend on capital maintenance and replacement for PD over a twenty-year period? Or what do we plan, right? Um, same with Streets. Um, we can understand an average per year, and then you get a little better look. But when it's housed in the general fund, like it had been previously, those fluctuations start, you could look one year and it looked like Streets is fifty-four percent of the budget, and the next year it looks like PD's sixty-eight percent of the budget. And then it's really hard to figure out what. And then it's really hard to figure out what, you know, where are the real costs at?
All right, just trying to get a grip on where all the money goes. And it gets confusing when it, when.
One thing we could do when we do presentations, so we, we typically do Fund 920 separately. But just for the first meeting, when we talk about it, we can add just the columns by department. I think what you're requesting is to see any expenditures by department together. Is that what you're asking for? To see it as a big picture? And why we wouldn't adjust the numbers when Mike's looking at the numbers because he has to look at it as a whole. We still can present it that way at like next year's budget by department. So you can see them in totality of what each department would be spending, whether it's in the general fund as PD is or in the, the capital maintenance plan.
Okay.
Next year, what we have is, I believe we have another squad next year or for 2024. Is it one or two? But that's the bulk of what they have for next year in capital maintenance plan.
Yeah, and I would extend the offer and this isn't just to council, this could be to other staff, but also of course residents, business owners. I mean, I, I, I recognize that my budget documents are big. The capital improvement plan is really big. I recognize that. Nobody else in the state's doing it like that. And I, I get it, it's a lot. And so if there are council members, there are residents, there are business owners that want to go through that stuff, I absolutely come to my office. We, we can sit and walk through it at whatever pace and focus on whatever you'd like. We'll do that for sure.
So this is a budgeted item for this year already?
It was actually last year already.
Motion to approve.
Motion, yeah.
It's part of the consent.
Yeah, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Right.
And I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilman Heeman and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Any other communications? I did have one thing I wanted to bring up. I think the even odd restrictions ended at the end of August, right? For watering restrictions? Think.
I'm not sure the answer on that question, honestly.
I think they ended August 31st, but.
How is water usage?
I do believe you're correct. We will make sure that we get all those taken down.
Yeah, I'd like to get the signs taken down, so, okay.
You, just to bring up to George, you asked that question. We were 1,300,000 gallons averaged in July and for August, we were a million gallons per day. So down from, definitely down from June.
Okay, good.
Any other communication at all?
It actually ended September 1st.
September 1st, okay, all right.
The other thing that I will add while we're in council is that we, staff will request that we go to the EDA meeting following city council meeting here and then follow with the budget work session after EDA.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.